A lot of that store, maybe that's gonna come out of the dirt and stuff. Um, probably 125, about 125 personnel bosses. They missed.
A little bit.
Well, I know, but I mean, I can put it, once you get places and let you go with it, like, I'll take it really. We don't have anything going on, because our actual people do it.
You live here. Might have element, Glenn Beckers might have.
Yeah, it's for us to do something.
Oddly enough, things that's just the people that got the power on next year.
I had told them.
They were Kentucky.
I guess it was several days ago.
My son, you know.
I had him since. All of their county. Much we're gonna be coming to the Taylor County Attorney.
Here in the tree. Scott and Shannon told me you still had one, like, right there by the covert that.
But you had to understand. Yeah, yeah.
Too big to pick up.
You got them all cleaned up though. I still have, like, the stumps and the root balls. But I mean, I got them all cut. I just haven't got rid of, I, I've still got root balls and stumps from them. I bet.
In the ground or are they out?
One that's, that's big is way over completely. There's two that are leaning. That might be the other big kind of. And then the rest of them are all just cut off and they're in, they're stomps.
They're leaning, did you cut them all the way down to the, just to?
One of them is.
Probably the identity with his people saying, I get them on the tree.
There's actually three of them.
You leave them longer, like, 12, 15 foot? It's a lot easier to spin them right out and come right out the ground.
Yeah, I, I did, I did ask people help me. The others, I didn't, but one of my steps are short.
Learned that with Hermine, anxious and cut them back. If you leave alone, you can just walk it around and just pull it right out. Then you cut it.
All right, we'll go ahead and start, Fred won't stand.
Father, heaven would come again, I thank you for life, health, and strength. You come blessing your name, but blessing that we now receive. Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy, we thank you for your shelter and protection. Father, thank you for the clothing, food, and blessing your holy name right now. Father, we know that nothing happens to God, you know, and we just bless you. Father, as the next storm approach, we ask right now to throw your strong arm of protection around us, keep us from all good harm and danger. Thank you for what you're going to do and what you've done thus far. We bless your name again. Jesus' name I pray, amen.
To the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. Welcome everyone to our meeting this Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. We have a conference-wide setup, number there is 1-917-900-1022. Access code 323471. This is not a toll-free number, you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. When the chairperson of the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial * five. The moderator will unmute your line if you're trying to speak and notify you right now from the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, you will be allowed to speak to three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an amended item, we give you three minutes for comment. The commenter may only speak one time for each amended item. With that said, has everyone, uh, did you see the amended agenda, the removal of item 16, additions of 16A, 16B, and 20B?
Yep. I moved.
And we also, Commissioner Newman had asked, we had a few folks here for item 17, if we could bump it up uh, right after our bids in public hearing. Item 17, if we're okay to go right after our bids in public hearing, would we be okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna approve our agenda, we have a second.
Yeah.
Second on the favor. All right, consent items. They're gonna have to check look over your consent items.
I have one change on consent items, the, on the invoices that were mailed out to you. We'll be checking there for the Chamber of Commerce, 53,001,66. That was an allocation for the Florida Horse Festival. We have taken that out of that, we'll take that out before we issue that check, so it'll be 43,001,66 since the festival is canceled, so.
Got it.
It was already entered, but I just want to make that, we'll take it out before we cut the check.
Got it. Any other discussion, any other questions on consent items? Or discussion, uh, or any other question to approve?
Move.
Second. Now, second to approve the consent items on the favor. Item 11, our bids, public hearing, item 11, the board received bids for the Taylor County Coastal Draging, intended by Kent City County Administrator.
So we didn't receive any bids.
So what I would suggest that we do, um, in light of the current situation, is try to time a re-advertising to where it comes on the heels of the debris collection being almost fully accomplished. That way, we don't wind up re-advertising now and sitting back for maybe two, three months and waiting for those prices to be built. Or not really knowing what the condition's gonna be when we get closer to that.
So, yeah, nobody to bid on it, I don't read it.
No, and we actually wound up, I, I probably had interest from, and correspondence with at least three different companies. So I was somewhat surprised, but there was a lot of questions there, like, on Thursday. Hey, have you thought about these, um, re-advertising answers delayed, you know, based on whether, and, you know, there was a lot of time left.
I mean, I didn't find out anybody that, I don't know if they ever got a hold of a bid package, and they were cut off within the last couple of years.
Gator Drage was one that was pretty aggressive, you know, he was going back and forth. There's some qualifications that he was having to work through relative to what the bid specifications required for our Florida certification. He has something that is an Army Corps, I've reached out to them to try to better understand that. This will give us a chance to see if that's a, an appropriate certification that we can kind of broaden qualifications up to. So what I will do is, um, just maybe keep closer tabs on John's efforts and to see when things are expected to be finished in that area. And then what time of the advertisement.
Any questions? Good. If, if one of those areas is, is like, peaking and then the basin is thinking, actually, if one of those is complete, or you see it's gonna come faster than the others, could that be factored into that time? Since it's in two different scopes and locations.
Possibly.
Would just be a way to stop those, those efforts, if one or the other area is not gonna be tied up with that.
It is, but you have to also understand that this oil site is at Ditch Creek, which is through that area where we are still experiencing congestion of debris collection that's on the open portion of the properties versus the waterways. So I wouldn't want to interject a, um, a draging operation in the middle of that type of congestion. I don't think it would be necessarily the best thing.
Are you talking, have, did the public put out, like, a map to be, to cut for work to be done on the field of the canal cleanups?
What I would suggest that we do is, when I have better coordination with Mr. Lau, and kind of understand that he is maybe a month or so expected for things to be wrapping up and, you know, everybody cleaning up and leaving, we will put it out, or I'll put it out for probably a 45-day this time, just to give them a little bit more, um, ground time where they can see what does it look like now that everybody's come through and kind of cleaned the debris up, so that they have a better understanding of it. And then we will just time the, the receipt of bids after that. So I, I wouldn't want to receive it, you know, day one as soon as he finishes, I'd rather they have some time to be able to physically visit the sites and say, okay, I see what kind of condition it's in, and make sure that they incorporate any concerns they have in the bids.
Mr. Chairperson, just to make it clear, I'll be managing that project. So one of the things that, I just don't want to put anything else on Mr. Lau. So, no, that's fine. So I, that's something that I can ask for in advance, they should start hopefully next week. And I can ask them if there's some type of timeline once they get in the water and see how much debris is there, and that, that will make it a little simpler.
Yeah, several miles worth of canal, so, I mean, it, it will take them some time, it has some effects.
Thank you. Over to, item 12, the board received bids for the DMH Federal Air and Craft project, intended by the Wanda Pemberton County Administrator. No bid.
So we'll work with DMH to see if we can maybe target, um, some of their vendors. We, we did, well, we'll advertise again, you know, I mean, I know they need this equipment.
Disappointing. All right. Item 13, the board received bids for the Taylor County closed landfill, mowing and fertilizing, intended by Kent City County.
All right, so we do have two, two bids for that. So the first bid is from Curb Appeal Services of Cockdell, Florida.
They were the contractor before the one that just initially contacted, so they have actually done. I would suggest that it be myself, Hank Evans, the Forest Director, and possibly, um, Gary Bumble as the review.
Okay, so the bid from Curb Appeal Services is total annual cost of 66,000. I'm sorry, 6,600, I'm sorry, 6,600.
Per year.
Yeah, annual cost, 6,600.
That was mowing and fertilizing?
So the fertilizing was 3,300, no, the, no, the, the, um, no, I'm sorry, that was fertilizing only.
I didn't think. 13,000 last time, or something.
So it was 14,400 for the mowing, 3,600 for any additional cycle, and then 6,600 for the fertilizers.
2,600 for the mowing and fertilizing?
Could be 21,000 for the extra boat. Uh, the second bid is from A&amp;R Lee Services LLC, um, from Perry, Florida. So the bid price, total bid price is 16,900, includes mow and fertilize landfill.
Annual, each year. Look, look at the bid form just one second.
It's a bid form, everybody. So he's got, uh, 12,000 annual cost for mowing, 3,000 for the extra cycle, and then 4,900 fertilizing, that's 16,900 annual.
I, I will make the recommendation that we award it to the, the lowest contributor, which would be A&amp;R Lee Services, contingent on their submission having met the bid specifications. Would we do that, and if we find anything contrary to that, we can come back to it. The only thing would be how to get the committee, committee minutes back into the board. So I'll put it on consent.
Right.
But that's my recommendation, is have the order to the lowest contributor. Yeah, you're welcome to vote that way, and I'll just bring it back as a consent item with the bid committee minutes. You do it this way, we could, uh, bring the contract back, right way to get the minutes.
Because they've already submitted all their documentation forward since their current contract.
I have a motion contingent on the committee review.
Contingent, contingent on them having met the bid specifications.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, my question, all right.
We'll just take some time off.
All right. Over to item 14, the board to receive SOQ for Taylor County, Florida, continuing contract engineering services intended by Kent City County.
All right, so we have three, four, two bids on the.
Should be four on each. And these do not have bid prices in them per se, these are statements of qualifications, so we will review these. Uh, the selection committee would be myself, Hank Evans, and Scott Knight, given that most of this deals with transportation. So we will review the submissions and then prioritize that, rank them. When our minutes will come back and we'll present that to the board with the recommendation of a contract award later.
All right, so there are, so there is four. The first one is from CHW from Latchwell, Florida. So there will be no prices on this, it's just qualifications. Second bid is from Locklear and Associates out of Gainesville, Florida. Third bid is from GNA Georgian Associates Consulting Engineers out of Tallahassee, Florida. And then the fourth, the, or the fourth SOQ is from North Florida Professional Services, that leads to Florida.
You just have to work it, I mean, three of these are, are three entities that we have had contracts with.
Over to item 15, the board received an NFT for Taylor County, Florida, continuing contract construction engineering and inspection services intended by Kent City County.
I would recommend the same as myself, Hank Evans and Scott Knight.
So the first SOQ is Locklear and Associates out of Gainesville, Florida. Second SOQ is from RS&amp;H Inc. from Tallahassee, Florida. Third SOQ is from CHW, Latchwell, Florida. And the fourth SOQ is from North Florida Professional Services, Lake City, Florida.
And as luck would have it, three of these four are also the ones that their contract just. So you have the same. They're all, um, the ones that we have, I'm sure out there probably as well are very confident.
We'll get to, uh, item 17, bump it up, general business. The board discussed transitioning the maintenance operation of the St. Hachi Community Center to the St. Hachi River Chamber of Commerce, intended by Commissioner Newman.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did request this to come before the board, we discussed this in our workshop, it got canceled, but given ongoing conditions and the needs, uh, that I feel like will be recurring down in St. Hachi at the community center, uh, it was necessary to go ahead and come before the board with this consideration. I have spoken with the St. Hachi Chamber of Commerce, who is willing to, um, assume the maintenance agreement I've talked with county administrator as to what those responsibilities are. Um, it just seems like a, a better condition in respect to, um, what I feel like are gonna be the needs down there and, and some of the issues and concerns that have been going on in the recent past. So I wanted to bring that forward, um, understanding we got folks in the audience and I from the chamber and folks from the public down in St. Hachi, so my request would be that we be able to approve that transition so that we can move forward as soon as we can in maintaining and having.
What would be the, this question, what would be the advantages and disadvantages for one or the other?
Sure.
Could you bring your mic up to you, please? Thank you.
About now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody here now? Anybody's mic?
All right, okay, so we feel like the advantages would be, given the concerns and issues, and we spoke to them as well, as far as exclusion issues that have been, um, somewhat ongoing, the lack of, um, that continuity and things that we see there in the community. So the advantage that we talked about as far as the St. Hachi Chamber maintenance would be that familiarity through seeing these needs, we're, we're not trying to take any option away from key service groups whatsoever. But we feel like the advantage is with the chambers' relationships through the business owners and understanding what the needs in the community are, that perhaps they would have a greater, um, say, success rate in working through the business options with their contributions to meet these needs. So they're, they're willing to take on that responsibility, they're willing to deal with these maintenance issues. And these are the matter of, you know, routine maintenance, not the big ticket like H back or something like that. So it just seems like with their ability, with the technology they have, and websites they have, the reach that they have through the business owners that are there, understanding what, um, the needs continue to, to grow into. It, it comes across to be like an option that somehow might not have been tapped into previously, so that seems to be part of what's going on there. And, you know, when we discuss those things, they're, they're already familiar with this, would not take away any of the funding or anything that the projects board has, because their donors have contributed that to the projects board. So none of those funds or assets would, would change hands. This would merely be the option to take out this maintenance, you know, in partnership with the county and the ongoing efforts to, to meet the needs there in, in the community. So a number of those folks that I've spoken with have brought us a great interest in partnering with the chamber, they're already chamber members and nonprofits at the same time. So it just seems like a good option for a great partnership.
Anything that we would have to do on our side specifically to make this transition?
Well, it, it would seem to me that you would probably want a, a written agreement with them. But, you know, just, just to memorialize that and put in what they're, what they're going to do. Are they gonna charge?
Uh, no, sir, I don't believe there'd be any charge, Mr. Reverend here, he's the president of the chamber, but my, my understanding, I'm sure everybody here is now, um, there's not a fee for service. This, this is an effort to continue working together in the community so that we see the needs met, and just a different option or capability to seek to meet those needs.
Well, my suggestion would be that it be an agreement, a written agreement, then you had to consider a particular timeframe, review it after it's been going for a year or so, see if it's doing what, uh, what the folks want, you know? We always put termination clauses.
Sure, well, for both parties, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there any particular method, um, during this transition period of he would be responsible for people who already have reservations, and if they paid or if they made a, a down payment on their reservation, how, how are we going to address that?
Yeah, so I would say if, if there's been an agreement with the projects board, and there's some sort of contribution that's made there, that's to that nonprofit, uh, we can certainly work that as far as what the time frame might be, so we could not, you know. So. Friction or something like that. So we would obviously not break that agreement or, or that date, but smooth. If there would be, that's the one agreement that's in that effort.
You would just state your name and address?
Yes, Sue Bilbo, St. Hachi, Florida. Um, I have a question about the maintenance, and then she questioned the rentals of it.
Sure.
Is the maintenance, does the rentals go with that? Will they, will the chamber do the rentals?
Yes, ma'am.
They will do the rentals?
Right, that'll be part of the agreement.
Part of the maintenance, see, there's maintenance, I thought it was just maintenance, I didn't know it was the rentals also.
No, ma'am, so as the current room it is, if I'm a repower. So, as the current room it is, if I'm a repower, the maintenance is the responsibility of who is taking up this option. And then, when you have a rental, as I understand it, that would be a contribution to that nonprofit. So, that would be allocated into the Chamber's account there.
When you said no money would transfer, does the money that's been raised so far by the Projects Board or the maintenance, they just get to keep that then?
So, I don't believe you can take funds away from a nonprofit that an owner has contributed to in that respect. So, I wouldn't be interested in taking away any funds from the Projects.
Thank you.
Sir.
And the Chamber is prepared to fund the maintenance immediately, even before the rental funds start coming in?
Chairman, what I would like to do is, because it's going to, there's going to be costs incurred.
Sure.
We would bill the Projects Board for certain, you know, whatever we had to do that would, you know, cut the grass or whatever, so we could get some of that money for the electric, because the Jackson put that money in that fund for electric bill and stuff like that. So, I would like to get some of that recruit back to us.
Yeah. So, if it was contributed under that cause, is there?
Yeah. We'd send it, you know, do what we have to do, and then we get an invoice to the Projects Board and, you know, then we say, here's what we did and get our, you know, they go for review. And I would somehow like to be able to combine both groups together. I think we're fighting after the same, going after the same thing, but if we combine them together, we could somehow, I'm just saying, that's just my.
Yeah. I have a problem with that because you have your businesses, Chamber, and the Projects Board.
We're all working towards the same direction. We're all doing the same thing. We're not, we're not, we're just trying to get anymore. We're just, we're just all trying to complete what we have down there.
Sure.
So, you know, that's how, that's how I would like to do it now. My Board, you know, we hadn't worked out any details yet, so I don't.
Was there any damage done?
Not to my fault. I haven't.
Not that I know of.
Good.
And Gaines, Steen Hatchet, Florida. So, I was previously on the Projects Board, and my personal opinion is the Projects Board doesn't need to work better within the community. I think Mark is 100% correct. They need to find some way to jive together. They also get reimbursements from the T C C for maintenance at that building, so that's something that needs to be considered as well in terms of bills. We're right now running out of there, all the emergency stuff there, and there's no issues to the building, just so you know that I've noticed. But, within the community, I think that is very much the Projects Board is the Projects Board, and I don't feel that people are always welcome. I think they have the best intentions, and I think there's some amazing people on there, and I think, given the opportunity to work with the Chamber, that that would literally buy ten X in what they were able to do. So, I highly consider, I think I should consider what Mark is saying.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, so, if there's a way, you know, during this timeframe that both these entities can partner, come together, work cooperatively?
Absolutely. We're all doing the same thing. We're all trying to do the same thing, so why split it up?
I have a problem with that. I mean, I think it certainly has additional potential, you know, but I also see that, you know, we need to put the community first. Absolutely. And that's. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman.
Would you state your name and address?
Lynda Johnson, Steen Hatchet, Florida. The Chamber of Commerce is for the businesses, and the Projects Board has always been made up of all organizations. We had very, I've been on the Projects Board for 21 years, and it was made up of the organizations and it was for the people. The events we held where the organizations would each provide like hot dogs or hamburgers or something like that, we had kids staying apart, we had Billy Bow Lake Scavenger Hunt, and it wasn't to bring people in, it wasn't to bring businesses in, it was for the people. So, I have a problem with that because I feel like it's a conflict of interest. You have a people here and you have the businesses here, and I know they work for the same thing, you know, it's like getting computers to the school backpacks for the school, doing stuff for the community, but they aren't really, in my opinion, and being on the Projects Board as long as I have, I think they're just two separate entities.
Sure. I mean, absolutely, they are, they're listed as two different nonprofits, but, you know, my position on that is, I believe that with the perspective that the Chamber has, you certainly have the potential and possibility to have a branch that also works through volunteer and nonprofit organizations to further meet the needs in the community, and you have an avenue in the Chamber that can communicate these needs to business owners that otherwise they may not be aware of. So, you know, we're not trying, I'm not, I don't have a position to try to create any more divisiveness than, you know, I think folks are aware of, but I also respect and see this potential as a step in the right direction and a greater opportunity to go
Do we need these two entities to kind of be able to come together before we really make a decision?
Is that necessary, Mr. Bishop, or can we move forward with the transition?
If you can move forward with it, my request is that if I'm going to draw up an agreement between these folks, I need to have some input from each side to determine what's going to be in the agreement. And so, you can get a hold of me.
So, we could have an agreement for transition date to go forward contingent on your documentation of agreement.
Really?
I guess we need to make sure that the Chamber group, if in the event that there's maybe not any collaboration with the funding that the Projects Board has today and some of the maintenance, then are they ready to handle the cost of that if they're not able to gain any of the projects?
Well, I mean, that, you know, the biggest thing is going to be our, is the electric. What else, Rhonda, was in that? The cost of that operation?
The mowing.
The mowing.
You know, just the general repairs in the building.
General maintenance, somebody cleaning the bathrooms. I don't see anything raising.
You also have staff that can keep up with those kind of records and the needs there.
Yes.
Right.
All right. Well, if there's no other discussion or questions, then we can just make a motion to. I make a motion, we get it all worked out, we can give the Conrad and get it all straight, and we'll go with it from there. Got a motion by Commissioner Murray to move forward for this transition. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newman, and call it favor. We will get to about sixteen A, Constitutional Officer, doesn't have any units. Mr. John Lout, Emergency Management Director, to provide an update on the hurricane.
Well.
They were starting like that.
I mean, I've been sitting over there halfway trying to put together a bunch of notes for y'all. I'm sure everybody here understands this is such a multifaceted event, somebody, I could stand up here for an hour and talk about the different things that were going on and did happen. I guess the most important thing is that there was no loss of life in Toba County, and everybody's accounted for. That's the most important thing to me. We made it through. Debris cleanup has already started through our, you know, association with F D M and F dot, kind of heading that up for us again. Maritime debris cleanup started today. It didn't.
No, not because of the, not due to the impending hurricane, so that's been delayed about.
It was supposed to start today.
It was.
So, coordinating with Tri-County down there, some road closures, try to get the power back to the folks down there. Obviously, the community, just like Idalia and Debbie, they work together so well. So many people with big hearts have stepped up to open up their own points of distribution. We had our county-led points of distribution. The people that have stepped up to help notify me of the community needs, to include some of y'all. Like I say, I'm just, you know, there's, I could stand up here for an hour and talk. So, I mean, I don't know. Well, I guess one big thing that has changed on this one is our displaced housing project. I'm sure most everybody's aware. Today, we've had 34 trailers go out to those people that have been displaced. We received 29 more today at our holding facility. And kind of how that works, just so everybody's aware, we receive, I have a team from F D M that's here helping us, they receive the applications, they go over the applications, and if there's any questions about, I guess, qualifications or whatever, we do have the building inspectors, they'll go out and do a quick look, make sure everything's valid. And then, once F D M receives that copy of that application, they send us a trailer that fits that family. If it's only one person or two persons, obviously, we get a smaller trailer for them. If it's a family, then we get, you know, one of the bigger ones. It's pretty simple. Well, it's not a simple process, but you get the idea. We're going to keep, at first, we had a four-day application period because I was really wanting to get a jump and try to get those trailers out there to the people that needed it pretty quick. Obviously, I think we've done a good job with that, and we're going to continue, we've put the word out there that we're going to continue to receive applications, and we're going to work with folks, and obviously, when we have elderly people or stuff like that, then we try to prioritize those to try to get them out there to them as soon as we can. Our resources to deliver them is kind of limited, obviously, because we have long force of staff, and of course, they're all busy. We really try to encourage folks to come pick them up whenever they receive that phone call. Do you all have any questions about the applications?
Do you all know how many applications were submitted today?
I know, well, I can tell you well over 200 that I'm aware of, and I'm sure that number, that was just within the first couple of days.
Just trying to get an idea of how many, trying to divide out displaced, you know, give you a number of how many may be displaced. Mr. Johnson?
I know within the first couple of days, it was over 200, and then, it was a lot.
Any other questions for Mr. Lout?
I have something, but Tyler's a Democrat today. Said the storm is out there now. What is that, Dixon, Nixon, something like that?
Martin.
Martin.
Milton.
Milton.
Okay. Said it's the worst one since history.
It was, it's the National Hurricane Center or the National Weather Service, in our brief today, stated that it was the worst so far this late in the season. Obviously, right now, if it's a Cat Five, as bad as you can get, wind speeds over 178 miles an hour currently, but thank God, they have forecasted it to weaken once it comes off the U Tappan Tussle, down to a Cat Three or Cat Four at landfall. Obviously, that can change, and I was going to move into that as far as how it's going to happen. Today, we were placed under a tropical storm warning. I don't want people to, you know, get too excited about that. Right now, we're just forecasted to receive 10 to 20 mile an hour sustained winds with 40 mile an hour gusts. Obviously, we're still watching it very close, remaining vigilant, because as everybody knows, those things, the track can change, they're pretty confident in the current track. Unfortunately, unfortunate for the folks down there in the Tampa Bay area, it's going to hit them, you know, pretty wide open, but I just thank God that we're going to be spared this time. We're briefing starting again tomorrow morning at 9:30, 11:15, 2:30, 5:15. We have a leadership meeting today with all the county stakeholders, including the school district, just to let y'all know, due to the timeframe of this thing, let folks know that after the 9:30 briefing in the morning is when definite, some decisions need to be made as far as, you know, schools and offices and that sort of thing. So.
Given that storm and its potential, how is that affecting your resources?
Well, as for, I can tell you right now, I hate to say it, but I have a turn away resources, because we have so many resources on hand right now. It's our pods, our parts of distribution, except for one at New Home Baptist Church, since it's inside, and I think maybe even Steen Hatchet, they might still remain operational tomorrow, but like the Ford operation base in that area, since it's operating out of tents, it's steam, I mean, at Keaton Beach, that one will be closed down. And just for your awareness, the multi-agency resource centers that have been open in Taylor County, they're shutting down, they will reopen Friday, so people can still go and get assistance and, you know, for help, you know, aid.
And John, didn't we, didn't our incident management team?
Demobilized, yes.
They demobilized. So, we have lost, is that, was that your question?
Yes, no. Okay. So, as far as.
Not one particular group, but I just, I would expect with that type of eventual that a lot of those folks end up going.
I had the Region Seven Incident Management Team come up again and assist us during this. They had to demobilize. They left this morning because they're all down there from the, you know, down south and want to let them go so they could go take care of their families, and even some of them are emergency managers in their own right. One actually called me and said he was still two hours out, and they were going to level one while he was still two hours away. But, I did have, I reached out to F D M for the admission, so I did have some back. I did have some backfield. As far as those positions, I have Ford staff that come in from a contract company to kind of help, you know, keep us going until we can kind of level out a little bit.
And Mr. Chairperson, in the beaches area, Tri-County.
Yes.
In the beaches area, Tri-County met with county staff and F dot this morning to, and the contractor, to try to get as much power restoration as they could before maybe some of those linemen had to move to South Florida. So, there was a push this morning to close roads, get debris trucks either in or out, whichever way they needed to go, so they could try to restore service to those grids ahead of, you know, like I said, a potential demobilization or partial demobilization. So, John, did they tell you how many, how many linemen they considered leaving here while they could, and then, okay. But they're hitting it hard while they're here.
They'll look to stage in this area to respond accordingly.
Well, I'm not saying they'll completely demobilize, but I know that there were additional resources, boots on the ground over the weekend and today to try to get as much done as they could ahead of this impending storm.
Well, you know, I'm, maybe I'm going to use another something like that, but I've been here in Georgia, some of the schools are still down there, still a lot of tubes out of house.
That would not surprise me.
Yeah. Well, so, obviously, Helene was a historic storm. Obviously, initially, it was not anticipated to go up north and do the damage that it did. The folks up there in North Carolina, in those areas, even though we were hit so hard and had record catastrophic damage to us, it pale in comparison to what they're dealing with up there, I would agree with.
John, did they have warning in North Carolina to evacuate, or was this something that they were not expecting? Now, obviously, they knew that the hurricane was coming, but what happened?
I, I can't, um, Commissioner, I, I honestly, I can't speak to it. I mean, I, I would think so, but, um, not to dodge your question, but I was like, I was kind of focused on what I was doing. It was, I, I would assume so, I mean, I've kind of heard, you know, different things like on the news or whatever, but I would hate, I would hate to speculate, you know? It, it, you would hope so.
Let, let me tell you something, kudos to the department that paid us for the worst in the world. But before that, when it was first said, you know, we had told evacuation, I got all kind of wrecked and that, we don't need to do that, just need to do that on the coast, well, then why do we need to do it all over the county? And that call was correct. I think it's better to be safe than sorry, so the next time you get that, have that problem, please do what you've done before. Let us, oh, want us, so we can get out and people be safe, all half of the storm, for that for the work.
I promise you, about that, you didn't get out, you need to go. Goodbye.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the local state of emergency. Any more questions, Mr. Lael, calling out of sixteen eight? I'll show you, yes, poke tight with us. We, uh, sixteen B, the board to consider approval of local state of emergency for Hurricane Milton, as intended by the emergency management director, Mr. John Lael. A resolution on the table, we have a, a motion to read a resolution, I thought it was. We have second.
Right.
Second, on paper.
I may not have to read it, I can just do it verbatim.
Hey!
Resolution of Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, declaring a state of local emergency, waiving procedures and formalities during the period of such emergency authorized and directing the Taylor County Emergency Management Director to take whatever prudent actions as may be necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community pursuant to this declaration.
And a motion, my question, Figu, to approve the second, my question, Matt, on the paper.
Aye.
County staff out of nineteen eighteen, the board to consider approval, proposal for recruitment of firefighter position in the Department of Education, educational assistant policy attended by Dan Castle, fire chief.
Good evening, everybody. Kind of give you a rough overview of what's been going on in the fire department. So, it's normal that we're not at full staffing, it's just, any department's never gonna be fully, fully staffed up. We've been riding that way, two to three people short for quite a while, but that's still above our minimum staffing levels. And we normally, we're seeing about a new applicant every six months is how often it's taking us, not as lo, not as fast as we'd like to see. Um, here in the last, just before the storm hit, we got notice from two of our current employees that they are going to be leaving us. Um, one before the end of the month and another one starting next month. And then there's a third that said, that told us that he is applying to one of these other departments as well, which is going to throw us way below our minimum staffing level, which makes it very hard for us to maintain operations, pretty much impossible. So, being said, there's a few recommendations that I'd like to bring to us before the board. The first one you see is the recruit level position and the educational policy that goes along with it. So, this is more of a long-term fix to try to get people in and kind of hold them for a couple of years, try to hire locals instead of people that are coming from other areas. The way it normally works is you have to be certified before you can work for the fire department, that's just the way the state does it. So what we're, what I'm proposing is that we create a new position as a trainee type position. We hire somebody with no certifications, and we put them through school. And now with that, once they're certified, they will have to sign an agreement, I, I will remain here for so many years, probably gonna be about three years. And if I don't, I gotta, I gotta pay you back the money for the, for the cost of the class. This is one of the, a long-term operation, to try to get us more locals in here, hopefully people that'll stay. Um, it's not gonna fix our immediate needs, but it is a recommendation that I would firmly push, so. Questions on that one first?
Comrade, we tried this at the hospital years ago, and people would leave anyway before they served out the terms of the agreement that they had signed to work for so long, and really, we found that we couldn't recover that money, yeah. What, can you, can you speak to that in terms of what we're talking about here?
They had a contract and they didn't sue them for it?
Yeah, yeah.
The applicant signed a contract, did he or she not?
Yes.
Okay, and did it provide, like, but she said that if they left, that they would have to pay the educational money back?
Yes.
But, did, did the board ever sue anybody to get the money back?
Is it worth it?
I think it's worth putting it in the contract, for sure.
Yeah, but is it worth going after?
Well, it's depends on how much money you spent on, on it.
If we put them through fire and EMT, which costs is about five thousand dollars, it's worth losses.
It's worth it.
And other departments that are doing similar programs, there also, it's, some of the costs is, you know, if, if they have a final check coming to them, you hold that money. If they have a leave that's supposed to be paid back, that would be held as part of it. So this is, it's not something new either, this is something that other departments are similar to us, rural, everybody's just trying to think outside the box and fix problems.
I, I'm, I'm not surprised that where, where we are, until those salaries come up, you're gonna remain in this position. You're not gonna have people to, to work for us for a long period of time for the amount of money that they're paid. And I've try, I have mentioned this before, until you get these salaries up, you're gonna be recruiting and recruiting, and they're gonna leave, and, I mean, I, I'm sorry. We have to get the salaries up to keep these people, to attract good people, and to keep them. You know that.
Oh, okay, you get there all on your foot. The second option that I'd like to bring for, for the board is our firefighters are paid on a twenty-eight day cycle, so anything over two-hundred-and-twelve hours in that period is considered overtime. Using this storm as a good example, so in the first two weeks of that period, they get paid a hundred and sixty, and it's balanced out on the second one. So, the guys who were working under the storm, they're still waiting till their next paycheck before they get overtime that they actually worked. And this has been something, as long as I've worked as a county fireman, really not like this, but it's just, it's the way we do business and we always just, you know, suck it up. I would ask that the board consider putting us on a fourteen-day cycle, which instead of a two-twelve, it's a one-oh-six. Another aspect of that is if a fireman works, an overtime shift on the first day of that twenty-eight day cycle, and then in the last two or three days, he gets sick or his child gets sick and he has to call out sick, then the overtime goes to straight there. Well, within our, our, what we're allowed to do on FLSA and all that, but it's one of those things for a morale boost to the fire department, to try to hold on to the people we currently have, I would ask that the board considers switching the fire department from a twenty-eight day to a fourteen day cycle.
I'm gonna tell you what that was.
Can it be a hundred and fourteen days? Why wouldn't it be a hundred and fourteen days?
It's just the way, it's, it's, explain the Kelly days, Dan.
So, and a Kelly, what we do with Kelly days is over, you end up in two, two fourteen day cycles, you work, one, one shift work of one-twenty and one-twenty hours, and that ends up built, having a built-in day of overtime, and then they have an option to take a Kelly day, which lets, lets us get away with not having to pay overtime, and they get, they get a free day off, um, everybody wins with Kelly day. We would still maintain that, on that same cycle, we'll work the Kelly days, and that's how you kind of keep the overtime costs down. So we won't change anything like that, it's, only thing that's gonna change is if they truly, whatever they work in that two weeks is what we're gonna pay them, instead of them having to wait till the end. So like I said, I, I think morale of our current staffing for the very little impact on, on the county, I think that is a very worthwhile thing to consider. That would be the second one that I would bring forward.
Dan, just, I'm sorry, and just to finish answering your question, so we budget two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six hours per employee for our firefires, firefighters, and we budget two thousand eighty hours annually for basically everybody else. So, they just naturally work more hours, so even, so when you look at the hourly rate, you always have to remember that they work more hours. And so their gross, or, you know, pay is based on two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six hours.
And then on the other, for the Kelly cycles, because the other one, if you do the math, and you say, well, it's actually twenty-nine twelve, and that's where the Kelly days come in, is because we budget on two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six, because we factor in Kelly days, and that's where, why we budget our salaries at, at two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six, because that's without the overtime, when we factor in the, the rest of the hours, it's overtime, so that's, like I said, that's already in there. And then the only third option that I would recommend to the board is considering raising firefighters, firefighter salaries. We've, we, I have not come forward and asked for any additional, because the board has been very gracious, the board has been giving us raises year over year. And I can attribute, um, the fact that we've, we've held as well as we have through the years, is because the board has been gracious in giving us pay raises every year. Unfortunately, the region in what public safety with firefighters has been doing around us has just been more. So it's not that Taylor County's been doing anything wrong or bad, but the rest of the industry around us is leaving us behind. Um, I believe the city is somewhere around nineteen fifty-eight, starting, Dixie County, when I did the math, they were on a forty-hour work week, and so theirs is fifteen, some change, but if you factor in all the built-in overtime, because they're on a forty-hour work week, it ends up coming out to eighteen seventy-seven, is I think where the math was, because they're starting firefighters. And then the department that we're losing over in Bay County, which is a whole other ballgame, but they're starting at twenty-one dollars an hour, and that's why we have people that are applying over there. Like I said, I'm just throwing that as an option that I think the board may want to consider doing something to get us in the same ball field that the other agencies are.
And Dan, I, I support that a hundred percent. I talked about this last budget meeting, last, excuse me, last budget season last year, you know, advocated for the firefighters to be brought up to what the city was paying at that time was nineteen, I believe nineteen oh-two, an hour starting. Everybody started at nineteen oh-two, regardless of what, whoever was there, what they made. I support whatever we have to do to give these people a fair wage and, and incentive to come here and incentive to stay here. You'll spend a lot more money on recruiting than if you, if we just go ahead and give them a pay raise.
With the fifty cents that we just got, October first, that puts our starting salaries at sixteen twenty-eight, so just in reference to, the rest of the field is eighteen to twenty dollars an hour, that's what we're competing against. And when you see these other departments, they're, you know, they're slow getting applications too, or not as many, but they're still getting applications where they're, they're full, fully staffed or pretty close to it. Like I said, that would just be requested by us to consider getting us closer into that, in that same field. Because if they have the option.
So tell, I mean, we're at the point, unfortunately, that because we've had a potential of three firefighters who were planning to go to another department, that we're, we're running out of options as far as trying to keep all of our staff stations operational, so the only other potential option is?
Yeah, we're, we're getting into the point where, if, when these people leave, we're gonna end up having brownouts of stations where there's days we will not be able to staff stations, and it's gonna be our outline station, more than likely, I would say, Keaton Beach, because it's in the center point between Steen Hatch, and we don't want to lose Steen Hatch, because it's so far away, we need to have that first response in that area. And Keaton Beach was the last one that we staffed up, I'm not saying we are going to be closing down stations, but if there's days where we just don't have staffing, it's gonna, it's gonna happen.
How many days have you not had staff?
As of right now, we, we haven't had that issue, it's, but with knowing that two, two of them, two, uh, excuse me, at least two positions are about to leave, it's gonna be a problem. We're gonna still try to fill it with part-time people, overtime, any way we can, but it also runs into, if we try to mandate overtime to keep it consistently open, especially with two, two vacancies below minimum staffing, we run the risk of driving off our current employees that say, I don't want to keep doing this, I'm gonna go to these other places, possibly make more money and not have to work so much. So it's, it's one of those, if you do, if you try to fix it too much, it can make the problem worse, and it, and that's what, that's where we're, we're trying to go on, we're trying to come forward with long-term solutions, current solutions, trying to give a whole mixed bag there of how we can start trying to fix this. Like I said, we've, we've kind of just been sitting back on it, because like I said, we've been, we've been waiting on it for, for quite a while, we're, we've been short one, two, maybe three, and we'll get an applicant, then we go back up, but we've all, we've been holding above that minimum staffing line. Um, and the last thing I wanted to do is for, for the board to find out after the fact that, you know, we have two people leaving, you know, maybe even a third one, and you found out after the fact, I want you to know ahead of time that we know that they're, they're gonna be leaving, and this was the first meeting we were able to get to, to give you that information.
Or we would have brought it up during our budget workshops, obviously, this is, this is a, this is a new problem.
This came one, really, pretty quick, and it was across the board.
Okay. Dan, I don't know if you, if you will like what I'm about to say or not, but with where we are in this county, and what we're facing, and the losses of revenue that we know we're gonna have, it may be time for this board to start talking about consolidation of some of the departments with the city. I believe that, that at the end of the day, we're gonna have to have those conversations, and, and probably not only with the fire department, but maybe with some other departments. We've got to find solutions of how we can keep these services, and I just think that's something we're gonna have to discuss, and it's been, it's been put off for a long time. And I'm hearing other people, um, I'm hearing a lot of other people talk about consolidation too. So, we probably need to start that conversation real soon, and I think we need to agenda that.
Question, and speaking with other departments, how successful are they with this type of process?
Which stage of it all?
So the trainee.
Trainees, this should, that attention. Madison County in particular has been pretty well on that one, and I was working with their chief using their, you know, how, how are they wording their stuff, what are they doing on, on their policies? So we mirrored a lot of that policy off of what Madison County's been doing. Theirs has been more on the trying to get paramedic side, but as far as hiring people and their certifications, they've been successful. I know one of our part-timers is a part-time firefighter EMT, that he, he was put through school by Madison County, and that's why he won't come to us full-time, because he's gotta finish out his drive over there. So, um, I, I feel if we do that, like I said, well, we use that on a limited basis, and we can't fill all of our positions with that right away, because they, you know, because we can't use these people until, as firefighters until, so we have to really treat them one at a time, the firefighters. And that's where, you know, it's more of a, once we get one done, we can look at another one, and I, I, I think we would probably get applicants for that type of position, and when you look at the workforce shortages, the mail closures and everything like that, and when we went to these job bears, sounds great, you know, they would probably come work for us, but they still have to go to their school, and they don't have it, so they, all these people that could work couldn't work for us until they went and got all their schooling, and it took, you know, six months to a year, so potentially, you know, there's.
The certification process was knocking, knocking a lot of your candidates out.
Yes, of, of all of our local, local people who maybe would want to come work for us, because they didn't have their certifications, they couldn't come work for us. So creating this type of position lets our locals have that option.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this request, in this training period, you're not requesting any funding, you're able to fund it out of your existing budget, does that understand?
Especially if we're only looking at one a year.
Our funding request for this training, uh, Chief. Our funding request for this training, the chief was able to fund this training out of their existing budget.
Yeah, for that one, what I'm asking for now is approval of that job description to create a new, a new job, a new position and the board approval on the, on the departmental policy.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. We got a motion, Commissioner Newman, I'll say goodbye Commissioner Moody, hold in favor.
Would you also consider the 14-day at least?
What part of that?
No, that's.
That was the second recommendation, like I said, there's three total recommendations.
I had a problem with going to the 14-day.
I know.
Going from a 28-day pay period to a 14-day period.
Yeah, I was second that motion.
Yeah, the motion, Commissioner Depp, say goodbye Commissioner Depp.
I have something to add to that. So I don't, I know that I think with the payroll system, I think we might have had some special programming to be able to do the, the calculations of their time now. So just, I just want everybody to know that we may have to do some, I'm not saying it can't be done, but we've got to figure all that out, so.
Anything for them. What Billis has to do now is she has to, she does 106 and then she has to hold it and then she has to calculate it out for the second one. If theoretically, it should make her job easier because whatever's on that timesheet is what she should pay. Anything above 106 would be overtime, anything that's not, it's not. Like I said, theoretically, it should make her job easier.
Yeah, as long as the payroll system, she can make them work it out, then that's not a problem.
We got a motion on second, hold in favor.
Mr. Chair, you know, I just want to say that there's some things in this county that we have to have. And good fire protection is right up there in, in number one place along with police protection. So I would like to make a motion that we raise our firefighters to $20 an hour.
If we discuss that, that motion on the table to be a second. To increase firefighters paid to $20 an hour.
That's for firefighter EMT and then we would, and then what about?
They just need to be brought up so that we're competitive and we're not paying a lot of money on recruitment. And these people get a fair salary. So if it's whatever it is, a firefighter, EMT, whatever they are, they shouldn't be making less than $20 an hour. You can go to fast food places and it's $16 an hour. And so for our firefighters not to have a good living wage, when that is one of the things that this county that we need to provide for our citizens, I don't think $20 an hour is too much. We can give up something else, but we can't give up fire protection.
If you did that, ma'am, that would be, I feel like this is $3.72 for firefighter.
Yes.
Instead of just saying the $20, just for everybody, that would be, it would come to 372.
I don't want any firefighter making less than $20 an hour. I mean, you know, they have to have special training. They have to have continuing education. They have to, what is it?
I, I was just going to say, we have several different levels of pay. So you have your, your firefighter EMT, then you have firefighter medics make more than the firefighter EMTs. And then you have your lieutenants.
We just hit about the scale with the lowest on the poll, total poll making $20 an hour. And because we'd waste that money on recruitment real quick. And we'll be doing it again next year and the next year and the next year because history has proven they're not going to come here and work very long for that amount of money.
Yeah.
You know that.
I would say, I mean, even if, like I said, that's $3.72 would be that, would be that raise. Even at a $2 an hour raise would get us in the regionally where, you know, we're not, we're going to be topping everybody. But at least we'd be in that, that same pool where everybody else is. Where right now we're.
How many people are we talking about?
17 total full-time people, and two part timers on call.
I'd go for two, let me make them drunk.
You'll go for what?
Two dollars.
And where does that put the lowest pay person?
18, 19, 28.
18, 28.
The city pays 1902, why would we pay less than the city? They do the same kind of job. They put their lives at risk many times. They have families to support, y'all. I mean, I don't have a firefighter that's, 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 you know, so I'm, I'm speaking for people that deserve a better living wage and we can do that.
Well, I don't disagree with any increase in pay, but it's not, there's a variable in different positions that probably need to be talked to before just starting out numbers.
Well, you have to create depression within, within your agency, aren't you?
Well, that's where, like I said.
That's what we were saying.
If you look at it and say for hers would be $3.72 equally across the board, bring everybody up. Same with the $2, bring everybody up at $2. So this way you don't, you're not doing justice starting. Because if we did justice starting, then you have starting firefighters making more than our long-term people. So it would need to be across the board. Fire department would be that.
The question comes back to with all our other employees and we've talked about this many times. We're, we're talking about fractionalizing increases, but for different departments. When all of our employees have some of the same costs and expenses and their values are no less in my mind. So for me to say, again, we've had all these conversations in the budget time and we couldn't even agree to go a dollar across the board. It had to be 50 cent. And now we're going to throw out all these outlandish numbers that are recurring costs? I can't agree to that.
Mr. Chairman, and yeah, I'm not going to necessarily disagree on thought with you. But, you know, we have a fire chief standing here before us tonight. And he's about to lose, he's not going to have staff to operate. We're going to be forced to go to recruitment and I don't know how much it costs, but I know it costs a lot to use recruiters. And when you use recruiters, and if you use people that kind of work on a part-time basis, just like with nursing or anything else, they make way more money than the people that's already there because you've got to have them, you see what I'm saying? So like, like you get out of work, if we've got somebody working for $15 an hour and you bring somebody in, they're probably going to get $40, $50 an hour plus per diem, plus everything else. So why would we, why would we waste our money on recruitment when we might could get some people that would come and stay?
I think this program that he's speaking of could potentially lead to that individual or those individuals that would fill some of those gaps, is that not true?
That's more of a long-term, like I said, in the short term.
Isn't that part of what you're saying as far as folks that are obligated or staying in other agencies? So that is filling some of those outages when it comes down to the interim and getting to that potential. The question, I guess, comes back to when we look at this fully loaded cost in this one department is, or I should say, not the question, the issue is that it's recurring and we're already on the rails with our budgets. And, and we've already had these discussions. And, and I respect our firefighters and I absolutely appreciate them, but I also appreciate our law enforcement folks and our emergency management folks. And we're, we're fractionalizing those increases when we had the option to continue at a steady pace to get to a point that we're mandated to in the minimum wage faction.
Mr. Chairman, and we understand that. I think the concern that the fire chief and I had, and again, if we had known this during our budget workshops, we definitely would have brought it to y'all. We were not anticipating potential, you know, losing three potential full-time positions right before this hurricane. Our biggest concern is that if we have to have brownouts at some of our outline stations, that y'all are aware of it and, and accept that because I don't, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know that we have many other options except to, you know, except to notify y'all of that while we try to find a solution.
I hear you loud and clear, Mr. Chief. I think you do a great job.
I can't hear you, can you hit your mic?
I said, I hear you loud and clear, Mr. Chief. I think you're doing a great, you do a great job with the fire department. I do hear you raising your concern of the potential of what's coming down the pipe because you are competing with other entities. And I, I don't know what our, our sheriff's department, what do they pay as deputies coming on board there? What do they pay those guys coming on board?
I don't.
I mean, I mean, what I'm getting at is you're, you're potentially, you're taking an individual that chooses whether they want to be good, be a firefighter or good to be a law enforcement officer, whether you're with the county or the city, city fire or whatever. So I don't have a problem looking at these numbers and really approving it because really you're here raising your hand at the last thing, I don't want to sit there to cluck behind you like this and say, hey, I raised my hand, I don't want to do anything. So here we are, I've got to shut some operations down, that's, we can't obviously do that.
And for me, like I said, it's making sure you all are very aware, like I said, because last thing I want, I wanted to be called for is that what do you mean you had brownout at a fire station and we were never called? I wanted to get to you as soon as I could, as soon as we knew about these situations. And like I said, as far as the $15 an hour and what you were saying, I agree. And that's why, you know, we haven't come forward and said we need, we need more, we need more. We were hoping that we would get to the end of all of that where everything would settle back out and we would be closer to where everybody else was. If anything, I guess we're, we're asking to the fire department, even if it's saying, look, we're not going to have it for the next year or two, just fast forward us to the end. So we can be, like I said, I, I do not want to brownout stations if I can avoid it or at least limit how often we have to do that. I've spent my entire life in the fire service and the idea of not answering all of the time in fashion is kind of, kind of carries that shit a little bit, so.
I see what you're competing with. If you're competing with others, a $2 or a $3 margin between you and the next agency, you know, the next town over, then maybe we do need to do something. And I would rather look at some clean numbers. I mean, is it bringing it back to our meeting on the 22nd? Would that give you, I mean, is that too late?
We'll have, by then we'll be short one for sure. We'll be on one, but it's.
You think that we do to change them and that's probably not going to keep them anyway.
Um, because even if, even if you, you took action today, we would still have to advertise and get it out there and start getting applications.
But I said, saying it's not even, you know, you're not, even if you took action today, even if, we're not, it's not going to change one of them staying.
Yeah, I can, potentially. I, I'm not, like I said, I don't know what the numbers, like I said.
I'm okay to.
If they are.
I'm okay to look at the numbers and break the numbers back with the different levels of.
And then that way we'll know after this last payroll accrual, what's, what's remaining in that department fund.
This board can look at the dollar amount that's been across the board and I.
Yes.
We can put that all that together for the next meeting.
We'll, we'll do that.
On the 22nd.
So, I'm sorry, could you, could you ask him if a salary increase would, would make one of them stay? Would it change their mind?
I can't get my head in, into there. Some people leave for money, some people leave for bigger departments. I couldn't give you a reason one way or the other, if it would or would not. But I think, you know, breaking the door back, some, you know, if you're willing to entertain looking at this, I think it's fair to bring, you know, bring forward as much, as much information I can give to you.
Okay, we can do that on the 22nd.
Yes.
So I have a motion on the table. So.
We have a motion on the table and we did ask for a second, do we? Go ahead.
I can redraw my motion if that's what we need to do so that we can look at numbers. Is that, is that where we are?
That's what I had requested, that we look at the numbers for the different level of the firefighting from the agency. And on our next meeting on the 22nd, whether it's $2, $2.50, whatever it is, and then we can look at it and really make a sound decision what.
We can compare what the other departments, we'll bring you some comparisons and, and some good numbers.
I want to say one thing. You go to raise one department without raising the other, you're going to have an issue. I've said it over and over, you just can't do that. I mean, if we don't go on base with getting them up to speed, we might as well get rushed them up to speed. You'll have other people in other departments with it too.
Sitting here with the fire department that, that you got every county around you paying $2 or $3 more at a start.
I understand that.
So you're going to run a fire department, you won't have a fire, you won't, you'll be calling them other counties to come to, come to these fires in our county 50 miles down the road.
I understand that.
At the end of the day, that man's going to be sitting.
And you'll have a department head running the motor grader too. There won't be.
You know what? That's all bull. That's bull, in my opinion. If we've got a department that is, and it's a following department to our county and we've got to lose that department because these people are not making money and we want to bring up, well, we got to give everybody a raise, that is bull. Because we don't have all these other departments that are about to shut down and leave us without protection. We can look at that at another time, but we're about to be in a crisis right now. And we've got to do what we've got to do to protect our citizens. And if you've got somebody in another department and, and they tear up a piece of equipment just because they're mad to a woman, you need to fire them on the spot. I don't, and don't put up with that kind of crap.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask. Ms. Luana, when our hurricane was bearing down on our coast, how many public works employees were working around the clock to deal with those efforts necessary?
All of them, as far as I know.
And, and the reason I'm asking that question, and I don't, I'm not making light of any of our employees dedication and service. And I don't agree with the statement that, like Mr. Feagles making that it's bull when we have those same folks when it's, when it's hurricane season and they're staying around the clock to get our roads open and report and get the things necessary so our infrastructure is open so that our emergency responders can go up and down that road. I don't, I am not going to diminish their service and say that one is more valuable than the other. I completely agree with what Commissioner Moody's saying in the sense that our public works folks are absolutely providing the services and they've answered the call we just had less than a week or 10 days ago. So I, I just, I don't agree at all with this concept that we're going to put a higher value over one department or the other. I completely understand and have been in places where those kind of actions have absolutely created more animosity and led to folks that were great employees leaving anyway, just like what you're already working through. So I'm not making light of the issue that you got there and I absolutely want to see a resolution of that. But I don't think this issue of fractionalizing increases is going to answer that call. I think it's going to create a larger problem to the contrary. And at the same time, I'm not saying that our public works should be put over our law enforcement folks. They've absolutely been down there in those storm areas. And our emergency management folks who are always answering these calls in the worst, worst condition, just like our firefighters do. So I'm not taking away fame from our fire department. I want to be on the record to say that. But I also not going to diminish or depreciate or underappreciate these other employees, not for one second. And I think those actions of fractionalizing increases is exactly what would be coming across and be communicated to our employees that their, their service is not worth as much, apparently. But I don't agree with that.
I have mentioned in the past, our road department, that they are a department that needs to be raised. They work on the poverty level. I have brought that department up. There's been nobody in this organization yet to go to bat for these people that are, are living on the poverty level. Not one person, not nobody in leadership or nobody that has come forward to fight for these people that, that can barely make a living. We have to start somewhere and I've said this in the past. We can't give everybody in Taylor County government the same rates. We cannot do that. That is bull, in my opinion. But we can start with a department that's in trouble. And just like I said last year, start with that department. Next year, look at that road department because they too need raises. They need to be making more than $15 an hour because yes, they do an important job for us. But right now, we're not in a crisis with our road department. We're in a crisis with our fire department. Let's take care of that department and then next year, let's look at that road department and let's bring those people up to where they need to be.
That might be it, Mr. Chairman.
We did have this conversation. We did have this conversation in a, a previous budget cycle, where these kind of proposals were made. And then we have these issues of industries that exit our area, this issue of a lack of revenues, and we've just considered one apartment over another one. And we've really communicated the issue that one, uh, job is more valuable than another. But we seem to kind of have a tendency not to connect all these dots when it comes back to recollection. But we were on the path to try to work through this process, and we had to settle for a fifty cent increase versus a dollar an hour because we're trying to deal with compression and a minimum wage mandate. And yet we're right back to the same scenario. So I don't, I don't accept the notion or concept that nobody's tried to reach out and deal with all the issues across all our departments. We have absolutely worked across, law enforcement had issues years ago where the sheriff's office was losing his employees to FHP and all these other folks that were, were highly competitive, and we're outpricing what those salaries were. So I don't accept that for one second. I do believe there's a way that we could have done that, and we had it proposed to go to an hour, a dollar an hour rate, and the only way we could agree on that was for fifty cent. And what we're going to be faced with is we're going to have to face the minimum wage mandate that we've already been dealing with, which some of these salaries, I believe, are underneath what that, that amount was going to be. So you're going to have that same consideration compounded with the compression issues that we've, that we're discussing here currently.
And I'm trying to get you some help.
Appreciate everything.
I'd like to say when they, when we want to go to running the numbers on the salary, we need, if we're going to raise one, we need to raise a lot.
We can't do that.
We got, we're going to have to, well, we got to do something.
We cannot afford to do that, and you know that.
There are folks in the middle of the night running their chainsaw, getting them, running the front end loader, getting them trees out in the middle of the road that somebody might run into and getting killed.
Can't raise them all, do you want to raise the road department or do you want to raise the fire department? We can't do it all, and we certainly can't raise all, everybody that works for the county.
We need to get the figures, what it would take to raise all of them, and we go from there with it. And we'll, then we'll know what it takes to do it. And then everybody, that way if you think we can keep firefighters by giving them two dollars an hour, you might, them three people might, well, even if you give four dollars an hour, they don't line up another job.
Yeah, I have never yet, and I've talked to a lot of people, heard of an organization that gave everybody the same raise all at one time because they're afraid of the compression and they're afraid they're going to tear up our equipment. I, I, we're the only people that's ever really made an issue out of that. But whatever we've got to do, if we've got to raise everybody that works in offices and everywhere else to get these firefighters what they need, and to get this road department what they need, go ahead and do it if we can, if we can afford it. But come next year and the year after, when we have to start cutting positions, they won't be the firefighters and they won't be the essential workers. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I'd just say, I know that she just brought this to the table, on a couple of different instances that would have to be active. I mean, I bet you are, that, with, competing with shrouding entities, which is about, kind of, I mean, he's, he's brought it based on them competing with shrouding entities, so, uh, I, I think we're looking at addressing an individual problem with a department. Um, so I'd like to see those numbers on the twenty second. All right, so we got, here we go, we're going to, uh, item nineteen, the board to review and consider approval of standard grant agreement, P two five zero four seven, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program for Southside Park Phase Two, Agenda by Melanie Cox, grant.
Hey, everyone.
Hello, Melanie, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Um, the grant is in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. That's the total project cost. It's for the construction of a new pickleball court at Southside Park, parking improvements, system associated with the pickleball court, security lighting, an additional picnic, just a tab with a picnic table on it, and a nature tee-off. We requested and wavered a match, and we weren't awarded that. So again, there's no, um, funding due from the board on this, it's a hundred percent.
But, any questions from the board? There are motions to approve attention. Motion to approve, all in favor?
Thank, thank you all, and we have received a great contract for the Horstland Arena. Um, Mr. Conrad didn't have a chance to renew the contract before this meeting, but that will be on the next agenda also, so that we can, if we're able to that project.
Yeah, very good, well, wait, we'll.
Thank you all.
Hold on, Melanie, isn't that, uh, the same grant that we just, that they just agreed to? It's the same contract, except different numbers?
It's substantially the same.
Remember I, I talked to you about that, wrote you a little note saying that it's the same contract, except for the numbers, and so you can consider it approved by me with the same, um.
We talked after, yeah. We've talked after the agenda deadline, so we'll just put it on the next.
Okay, all right, I just want you all to be aware that I had looked at, Melanie. You have looked at.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on, County Administrator Adams, twenty, the board to consider approval for lateral support for aerial mosquito spray, Agenda by County Administrator.
This would just be, um, in the event that FDOT does some trapping for us and finds that there's a need for aerial spraying, I just wanted to get ahead of it so we did not have to have an emergency meeting. I don't know that it's necessary at this time, we have not received, but a few calls for ground spraying, but, um, I don't know how you feel about how lining this up in case we need it.
We've got a lot of rainfall, and I'd be in favor of it.
I would say, I'd sit up in the bushes close to my house. Pretty sure when they soak up the, uh.
Well, this would obviously be after Hurricane Milton, um, makes landfall. This would be more for, I, I would assume, for next week, since we know we have another, another event on top of us. But again, I just wanted to get ahead of it based upon any surveys that they do.
All right, we have a motion to approve, we have a second, have a second, all in favor?
I'd like to say one thing about that, that last spray, it really helped play the game. I mean, it really made a big difference. I mean, the last two days, mosquitoes have been showing up that I hadn't seen, so they coming.
Yeah, for sure, I agree. All right, we'll move on to, uh, twenty-eight. The board to consider approval requests for debris removal within public cemeteries, Agenda by County Administrator.
So, um, we are, I feel blessed enough that our governor has, has authorized FDOT to assist us with debris removal once again. This time it has, the, um, memo has expanded to include county properties. Our own policy states that we don't perform anything other than just mowing, basically, without board approval. So if the board would like cemeteries included, I wanted to go ahead and get that approval ahead of time, then I'll reach out to the cemetery boards and ensure that they want this work done.
Mr. Chairman. I'd also like for us to include the non-maintained roads.
I.
That they be picked up, these people pay taxes the same as the rest of us.
I fight that every time, and I have already requested it, I just don't have it in writing, that they will include the non-county maintained roads, but.
When you're done.
I, as soon as I know, I, I've asked for an update regularly. I spoke with our representatives, um, last week, and I'm just waiting for something in writing.
Keep going.
I do every time, I, I fight every time. And I was somewhat disappointed that, um, we have to fight this again, but we will, we will continue to fight it, just like we did the last, I think, three times.
Yeah, let me ask you this then, who is the decision maker that says no? Who is that person? We need to be writing letters to them.
I believe, well, I believe that is, is FDOT and Tallahassee, it's not our regional people. And what happens is, we have to enter a mission a specific way. So we entered a mission and specifically named county maintained and non-county maintained roads debris removal. Then I was called and said, you have to change your mission because it's not in line with the state statute. So we changed the mission, and then the response was, well, that's not what your mission says. So I immediately called our, our representative and our senator and asked them to take on this fight. And, um, we have, I mean, we've been successful every time, so I'm confident. I just hate that we have to fight it every time.
When you find out the person that's at the top that says, no, we will not allow y'all to do that, then we can draft a letter, we can all sign it, requesting that this be done. This is critical for these people, even though just because we don't maintain their road, they pay added lawn taxes and they deserve the same services with debris pickup as the rest of us.
All right, yeah, okay. So, uh, do we have a motion to approve the item of the cemeteries?
Yes.
I'm open to a motion by Commissioner Zent, second by Commissioner Newman, all in favor?
No.
Hi, everyone. Um, again, my team, Ruth, Mr. Peter. Uh, moving along to twenty B. Uh, the board to discuss the use of Blue Spring Gravel Stove to do the both county administrators.
So this is, um, a request from Ash Britt, who will be the waterway debris removal contractor. Um, they just want to use a small portion of, um, Blue Springs Gravel Stove, just for staging. We did it during the last storm, they, I mean, they, 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 um, restored the property to what it was before. It's just for temporary storage, I just wanted to ensure that the board approves of that.
I have a motion, I say to, say to, Commissioner Moore, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
All in favor? All right, one-one, County Administrator to discuss informational items.
Once again, our governor, as I've already said, has authorized FDOT to partner with Taylor County to complete right-of-way debris removal and debris removal on county properties, which is something that has expanded. Um, debris removal began last week, and Sirius currently has forty-plus trucks in Taylor County for debris removal. Our governor has also authorized waterway debris removal. Ash Britt is the contractor, once again, I would expect debris removal to begin next week once Hurricane Milton has made landfall. They will be starting at Keaton Beach Canal and Steen Hatchie Boat Base in a river. So just to update the board on that. Um, we also are continuing to work with our insurance carrier to evaluate county facility damage. There is significant damage to our coastal parks and boat ramp facilities and mainly roof and fencing damage further inland. And once I get a list of what's damaged and what's not, I will bring that to the board. But they started basically the day after the storm, um, inspecting our facilities and mitigating what they could. So we, they helped us carve what we can, um, but there is some substantial damage that we will have to address. And lastly, I just wanted to advise the board that FDOT and Department of Corrections is providing property cleanup and vegetative debris removal on county properties, um, which alleviates the need to contract the work. So if you drive past Forest Capital Park and see all the debris stacked up in the right of way, that is, that is Department of Corrections, that has done that for us, and they have been absolutely invaluable. Um, they're making a way to run now with county and city, and I think school district property have been a great help. That's all, thank you.
Page out of twenty-two, comments and concerns for the public for non-adjaded items. Non-adjaded items. Uh, for the board, national items, please.
Mr. President, I appreciate everybody that has spent so much time in the last almost two weeks working on this, and I know people have been working around the clock on us, and I appreciate all the efforts of everybody, I appreciate our road department, and I appreciate every department that has worked diligently to help us, it's appreciated. I appreciate all the volunteers, all the agencies that's come in, it's been phenomenal, the help that we've had. We've been so, there's some really hard times, and I think we're going to see harder times.
Yes, sir. Lamond, we talking about Keaton Beach and we talking about Steen Hatchie. How last by deep would be, why doesn't it, wouldn't it be, since the equipment's already in that area, they can go ahead and clean it all up?
They will, they will, they're just starting at, they're just starting at Keaton Beach and.
Clean it all up?
They will, they will, they're just starting at, they're just starting at Keaton Beach and Steen Hatchie concurrently, and they'll move around to the other areas. Right.
Emergency program.
Right. And I did see crabbers down putting in the water at Keaton Beach this morning, so I know that they were able to, to facilitate using that boat ramp.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Newman?
Well, certainly, I, I mean, we've been through another battle, so thank you to everybody that's taken their part in, um, on the staff, and then all the way up to the ladder in chief. So we appreciate all those, uh, efforts and, uh, certainly respect, uh, volunteers and everybody that's taken apart, folks that have donated from county, state, and all across the state. And, uh, just, just a real, uh, show of kindness and concern, so we appreciate that. And, uh, even though it's an awful experience, we've seen great, uh, things come out of this awful experience. And so, uh, I would ask, um, as we were made aware, there have been some folks that were, uh, arrested for looting, and you recall that, Mr. Bishop, and, and in conversation with our law enforcement, and they asked about a letter of support to go to our state's attorney, and did you make any progress, or could you make progress with that, please, sir?
Sure.
So for folks that may not be aware, our law enforcement chair, um, at, at a previous meeting of the board, that they, yes, sir, that's correct, um, that there were folks that had been arrested for, for looting, and, uh, it would be helpful if our board would send them a letter of support for, to our, um, state's attorney requesting that they be prosecuted to the fullest extent, given the consideration and what was the state, was folks that have been subject to a natural disaster that are then, uh, really being stolen from them, so.
You'll authorize me to write that letter, although I am a defense lawyer, I will write it.
Yes, if you understand what you're saying.
Yes, please do.
So, and is everybody in favor of that?
I'm, I'm in favor, really, because I talked to several law enforcement officers the last time when they had looting, they let them out of jail before dark.
Right, sun went down. Before the sun went down.
Exactly, before dark, they was out of jail, and that's not right. I want them to be prosecuted to the fullest extent, and you got them coming from other counties over here, looting, not just Taylor County people they arrested, they arrested from other county. So you got a surrounding county group coming in here at night, trying to get stuff. And they've actually stole people from property that they had put out on their property. They cleaned up their, they had set on their lots, you know, and didn't have, they couldn't even get to it and haul it out there, and them folks towed it out there, so.
That need to stand for any other charges, because I think that's, uh, our sheriff's department and city police, that's a lot of their same issue, is they put these folks, they deal with these folks and then rent back out on the streets. Like you said, before the sun goes down, they'd be done back when they call them out.
That's right.
So, uh, it don't need to just stop.
I'll send that out tomorrow.
That's it, Mr. Director.
That's all I have.
That's all I got.
Uh, I'd just like to say thank you also to all of our emergency management staff, urgent department, all the volunteers that's come in, you know, all the citizens that's just really rolled their sleeves up and have helped, you know, major disaster within this community. Uh, that, I know it has meant a lot, very much, I've had a lot of, with our emergency management, and I'd like to, not think that we're getting good at this, but, uh, this storm stuff, but I did get a lot of, uh, comments of, you know.
But I did get a lot of, uh, comments of, you know, praising these folks for the job that they've done during this storm. So thank you everyone that, you know, our, just that we're, you know, our prayers are out for the folks that had major loss.
We got, yeah. At, at some point in time, we're going to have to address our losses. And, and what's, what's this going to mean to Taylor County? What's this going to mean to our, to our revenue? And we're going to have to have those discussions pretty soon, you know, the impact of this financially to us. And I don't think we're going to be able to make up everything that we've lost, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to talk about this.
I agree.
All right.
Um, I need all y'all to hang around, because at the, at the, when we approve the budget and all those resolutions, everybody has to sign those. And y'all got out of here last time, and I was getting you to sign them. So if everyone, please hang around, we can sign those documents y'all approved at that budget meeting before we leave.
Yeah, all right. Everybody hang around after the. Have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?